Okay Christina, sound check.
Passed.
That's successful. All right Lisa, sound check.
Hi.
Hello Jim Gilligan, sound check.
Yes, here.
All right, thank you all. The Chairman Michael Koo calling to order a special meeting of the Wellington Board of Finance on August 25th, 2022 at 7:07 PM. Just to clarify, we have myself, Pete Tanaka, and Stephanie Summers in the room. And a regular member Christina Milos on Zoom. And alternate Jim Gilligan, alternate Lisa Wolf. We are expecting Jeff to either not be here or be late, and we're expecting Joe not to attend. So.
Bye.
I know if we have a point.
Okay, I will need to see Lisa Wolf for Joe.
Whoa, sorry, I second that. All those in favor of seating Lisa for Joe, please say aye.
Aye.
Christina?
Aye.
Okay, Lisa, you're on, you're now loading. Members tonight. I will go receive Jim Gilligan for Joe.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And Lisa? Does aye, okay. Our next is Jim, you are now on board also.
Yeah, on board, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
The, my audio was really poor, I'm having trouble hearing you.
All right, I'll make sure to speak up, how's that?
Better, thank you.
Got it. We apparently do not, I thought somebody was going to be here, but maybe they were off week, she and I missed connections. Oh, I can do it off of the recording afterwards. Okay, approval of minutes, we tabled some minutes of the last meeting. So our next up in our list would be February 10th. And just to get us started, I move that we accept the minutes of February 10th. How's that?
We didn't do the minutes of January, or we didn't do January 11th?
We did January 11th.
Okay.
It was February 10th that we stopped on. So any comments, additions, or corrections for February 10th? All right. That's good.
Oh, just, let's see. Page. On page three, oh, page two, under Wellington Fire Department, in the first paragraph. There's a reference to the fire department applying to the Board of Assessing Appeals. For the real estate tax bill, I think it should say. You know, like. To, you know, against the questioning the real estate tax bill because. Or something because it was, it's, it's just kind of vague, like, or else. I mean, I don't think they're, they're asking for taxes, actually, right? It's just unclear what they're, what they're going to look for.
Yes, okay.
And it's, it's in that first paragraph.
So to, to clarify.
To clarify why they were going to the BAA.
Correct.
I mean.
To appeal.
The tax bill, yeah, to appeal with. And then on page three, same page. It's, it's, it's talking about Chief Moore presenting the budget for the fire protection budget, and then the Wellington Fire Department number one.
Shoo, go, shoo, go later, go later.
Is that, is the fire protection budget, is that what it's called, or is that the term of emergency? Not considered.
Yeah, the.
It's AEDs and stuff, right?
Right, so we can clarify the terminology.
Yeah.
They are worded differently on the document that we typically see them or think of them.
Okay.
Fire protection is its own sort of classification in there. And then there's, within fire protection is the two fire departments, but then the ambulance is separate from Wellington one, and then there are those other things like the defibrillators and all that stuff. So there's, there is some confusing terminology.
Maybe there's something more descriptive to say, even though that's the name of it, or something.
Okay, check that.
I would designate in a parenthetical in the fourth graph down, that 13 is southbound, right?
Correct.
And then more substantial is.
More commonly is Wellington Fire Department number one.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, is that number one?
Yeah.
Yeah, number one and number 13, yeah.
Yes.
Number one, this is.
It's Wellington Fire Department number one in Wellington, which is Station 13 in the county number system.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about what 213 is, isn't that southbound?
It is southbound, it is Wellington Fire Department number one, and it is Station 13 and 213 because of the county number system. So it is all three of those, right? And the one down in across from High Chase is Station 213. The one further out by the highway is Station 13, but they're all Department 13. It's very confusing, it's multiple layers.
Maybe I should draw that one. I just think for people reading it that are like, what, which one is that?
We can still, we can touch it up.
Okay. Okay, page four, second paragraph, saying that I stated that an analysis was conducted. After the outlay of, of the population, it's confusing, I think it should say. As the rub now, this is talking about union handling costs. After the. Cost averaging reserve act, and population, or something, was, the analysis was conducted. On, you know, on the cost outlaying population, it was estimated that a direct share of costs would be 48,000.
Okay. Okay.
And then. I think it should be noted in the minutes, at the end of that section, it's on page four, right above D, Emergency Management Corrective Budgets. It's, I think at the end of that, it should say, because it's talking about the union issue and our discussion, that the DOF requested. To, well. The DOF asked about the impact of staffing, and we're. Told to repeat them, because there's, there's discussion about the call volume and, and the second ambulance.
Okay, that there would be no additional staff into therapy. Right, well, the second.
I'm sorry, yeah, it's, it's the second ambulance.
Okay, yeah.
And it's right above letter D.
Hey, any other revisions, corrections? Would you be, pass it as amended, or should, or corrections? All those in favor of accepting the minutes with the noted corrections, say aye.
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 And Jim? That was aye, that was not Jim. Jim, you're bow on accepting the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Thank you, motion unanimous. Okay, moving on to February 24th. I move that we approve the minutes of February 25th. Second. Discussion? You apparently did a better job looking at it.
The only, the only thing I would say is the overall first reference on people, and they, they're not listed in people who had attendance at the meeting. And if they're, had officials, I think they should, the first. So for instance, in this one, it, I think on page two, midway down, under school building committee update, they should say zoning agent Mike Tomato. Because. Just to be, for the boil, so people know, you know, if we're introducing someone, we're working with this, you know.
Okay, what pages on again?
Page two halfway down, under the school building, the update.
All right, any further corrections for February 24th? All in favor of accepting as noted, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous, thank you. The, oh, that was all made back in the car, and they didn't, that's a big car, yeah. Okay, I move that we accept the minutes of March 10th. Second.
Oh, what about February 24th?
Yeah, was that?
No, that was, that was February 17th.
Oh, I called it out, it was February 24th.
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll set, or we're getting to the 17th, I'm sorry.
I don't have it on the list.
Well, thanks, I gave you the 17th.
All right, well, I'm gonna check.
I didn't really save the 24th, I just.
Yeah, I, I looked back at the list and it looked like we had accepted, I thought we had accepted February 17th in the past, I'll make a note of that.
See, I'm sorry, Mike, the thing is, that's why I was kind of asking, a repeat of all the ones would be so.
Well, I went off the list from the agenda of the last meeting. They were all listed in the agenda of the last meeting, so, that's what I went off of for tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so. All right, so February 17th, we'll put a manuscript there.
Will be chair, dinner change. The justice of the February 24th.
Wellington, just a moment, I just want to check, I just want to make sure that February 17th one got sent out to the public before we. All right, so let's do the 24th, so I know that was sent to the public.
Yeah, it was in that, that batch from a couple weeks ago, all attached.
The 17th was in that, okay, then it went to the public, because that was the same batch. All right, so. The last motion was in error, that, because it was for. February 24th, we made corrections based on February 17th. So I moved that the previous motion be corrected to February 17th. Second, all those in favor of correcting the previous motion to February 17th, aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous, my apologies. So I will reintroduce my motion to approve the minutes of February 24th. I move second. I just, you had it out, you were, I, I was, I was in a rhythm, and, and thank you for that, I. Okay, any comments on February 24th?
Yes, the first one I'm interested in is. I'm sorry, did you say 20?
No, it's easy.
The, is, on page two, first paragraph, it's under the treasurer's budget. Do you think, because it's kind of hanging there, that that budget was reduced 26,000? I thought we should make a brief sentence for clarification, that an assistant business manager position was added elsewhere to.
Because it wasn't, you're saying it wasn't clear enough?
It just sounds like we cut the treasurer to down from, you know, 32,000, 6,000 without any. I mean, it's just context.
We want to hold back at this 10 years from now for standing with that, right?
Right. And it must be a really bored person without a life, that's still.
While patients still know.
And then under, under items to ARPA process update in the second paragraph. It doesn't, that first sentence doesn't mean what it's, it's about, you know, it says answers. Discussion itself on the auditor answers to each of the questions, auditors should be obsessive. To each of the questions that were asked, and I think we should add about ARPA approval, because it doesn't say what all this discussion is about. Approval procedures.
Does look like you're joining, we got Ralph's voice. Okay.
Okay, and then, in that, in that same section, the last paragraph in the section two, about the ARPA process update. It says, we're talking about. You know, the ARPA motion and everything, it says Chairman Koo stated that the Board of Finance does not, and there's missing word. And first select only mission.
Maybe we just simply did not.
Has reached out to the town attorney for a formal answer.
Okay, what location is that again?
It's the last paragraph under section, under number two, ARPA process update.
Okay.
Okay, and then page three. Just, just first name thing again, Troy's needs this. And. Yeah, and he's not listed in people who are in attendance at that meeting, so I thought. And then. And then on the last thing, which was sort of good, welfare. I made a comment about Pat Pinn passing away, the first reference is, just says, the late great Pinn, I think it should say Pat Pinn, it's spelled. Should be P I N E, and you want. And then it says Shakespeare Day, it should say Shakespeare studies or something.
Right, all those in favor of accepting February 24th as noted, say aye.
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 Then three online, it's unanimous, thank you. All right. Now, I move that we accept the minutes of March 10th.
So we're not moving third?
I don't have it on the list.
Okay, there's, there's definitely a mistake on that.
Okay, so we'll, we will address the, the one and third of the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, it's just, it has me moving down second. And it's the one that was about ARPA.
Come on, step off. Okay, so let's stick with March 10th. I will have to come back to March 3rd.
Okay.
So my motion was March 10th, and I can say.
It's on second.
All right, discussion on March 10th. And by the way, at 1.7, you did a way better job of looking at your.
Well, I did.
And I usually pick things up.
I did try to, I did try to take it seriously, but I gotta say, that's our end, so you guys are pretty good in it.
You don't have anything on the 10th?
I don't have anything on the 10th, the 17th. On the 17th.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes of March 10th, aye, aye.
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 Yes, thank you. I move we accept the minutes of March 17th, second. Discussion. All those in favor of accepting, say aye.
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 All right, all six, it's unanimous, thank you. And I move we accept the minutes of March 24th. Second. Discussion. Okay, let's vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, unanimous, again, all right, thank you, we're almost all thought of on minutes, we will have. The March 3rd one to come back to, and then we will have July. I hope you know July also. Let the record show that Kusak just arrived at the meeting, so Jim, thank you for your service.
You're welcome, I'll stay tuned.
All right, excellent, in case that's left. I made this slightly, all right, that's right. Okay. We are through four minutes, next on the agenda is President to speak. Public participation is desired and encouraged, speakers will be limited to time and appropriateness of comments to maintain progress. Second, I'm trying to maintain the bar. Who's out there who would like? Unmute, or turn on your camera, Ralph Toulis, or Sodi? You'll have to mute, unmute.
There we go, yeah, I got it, sorry about that, was there some difficulty getting this going online tonight?
Yes. Because I have. Seemed there at the beginning.
Is there just three people in the room, because the camera is not panning to whoever's speaking?
Oh, there's four, well, is that? Stephanie, I don't think is on the camera. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be working on its own, man. Let's see if we can mess up, hang on, it's just, Ralph, you're more than welcome to drive down here.
Well, thanks, but no thanks.
I'm practicing social distancing.
I like it this way. That's really all I had, Mike, I didn't have anything to comment as far as the, the business in front of you tonight.
Sandal, is that enough going on in town?
It's unplugged, that's the problem, so we're running off of that camera up there, okay. Owl's not plugged in, I don't dare change it now.
Okay.
Stephanie, do you mind moving around the corner?
Hey, hey, Mike, this is Erica.
Hi, Erica.
Apologies, you have, yes, you're not working on the owl. There is a remote that should be there on the table with you that runs the camera, so you could actually move the. Camera.
Okay.
That larger remote, and it has some arrows, you could actually adjust the camera if you needed to. But you're running off the camera and the microphone. On the unit as opposed to the owl.
There you go, you can see all four people now, thank you for that, the remote, the remote did the trick. Thank you, Ralph, for pointing out our failings. Okay. Any more public to speak, President to speak, I'm sorry. You can tell the heat, it's a little sensitive in this. Okay, moving on to old business, budget status, financial report. Stand by everyone, we're gonna try to share the screen for the financial. One there, three times. You must be really interested in this meeting.
And, and, could it start?
Should we have? Well, we're, two times, yeah, that's not a problem. Yeah, you're, there we go. So, we need the top section. Revenue. Do you have any questions? Just looking at.
I'm just wondering, that, that's sort of probably midway between tax. Payments, right?
Right, so the, the payments would have been coming in.
Right.
And this does a July 1st.
If, if anyone, if Janice, or anyone in this any context from where we are. Collection, like, or we have some, you know, other second, second kind of idea, or something better than that.
Lisa, were you just speaking, or was, was that not for us? Okay, all right, I just want to make sure you knew you're muted, thank you. Janice, do you want to comment at all on revenue or tax collection?
So I know we're over 50, 50% at this point, we had a lot of mail at the end of July that we. Hadn't gotten posted, so up through, I think it was about August 10th, we're basically 52, I think, percent.
Okay, and is that typical?
Yeah, we usually gain 50% through July. And going forward, we'll, you know, it'll just increase from there, but 50 is normally the, is the norm for July.
And comparing what we saw last year, there's a column showing July, the right most column shows July 31st of last year, just as a comparison. We're well ahead of that, and I'm assuming part of that is because people took tax, the opportunity. Um, we're well ahead of that, and I'm assuming part of that is because people took tax, the opportunity to defer the taxes that was offered.
I think last year, Mike, we had. On the first of August, we had our bigger mortgage companies pay, so that's. That's pretty much the difference between the two years.
Expenses are running, uh, lower than where we were at this point.
Mike, if I can, this is Erica, so you're seeing a snapshot through July thirty-first.
Right.
And so what Janice is saying is a lot of things came in on August first, right, that's that cutoff date, so in the next month's report, you'll see. Um, a better shot of where we stand, where Janice is saying we're about fifty-six percent. It's just not showing through July thirty-first, because there was a lot of payments that came in right at the end.
Right.
And by the time we got caught up with them, it was in August.
Understood, thank you. It's hard to look at the first couple of months of the year and get a real feel. All right, so let's move down to the comments here. Reimbursements for recycling, expecting more than budgeted, now receiving checks for scrap metal versus credits on invoices. Investment income expecting more than budgeted interest rate increase since public season. Spending ensures transfer stations, scrap metal credits no longer apply to invoices, now sending checks will show on the revenue side of the budget. Otherwise, no budget concerns. So that's a good one for us to just remember as we see this over the course of the year. Because scrap metal use of credit within the transfer station budget, we're now going to see it. That those credits instead will be coming in as red. So. And, and my understanding is scrap is high right now, so maybe that. That also makes us a lot of fear.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any questions on the financial report before I even share it? The numbers, yeah, it's a credit revenue, but it's probably over a lot of this kid, it's going to. Still, it's the same comps, right? Yes, and just we have to remember it shows in on the revenue side, right, revenue will be a little higher. And the expense will show a little higher because it would have just credited against the expense previously. Right, it's still revenue. There's still that part towards, yeah. It'll still be addressed as revenue from, that's true, yeah. Okay. All right, reports from school building committee are assigned. There, uh. There's ongoing work by the school building committee to develop, um, a couple of new things, most specifically, probably most important for the public. Is a outreach communication, a sort of a video type of communication that is in the works right now, that task group. Within the school building committee to help provide an update, uh, essentially. All the key points from the creation of the school building committee up till now, and then a little bit of snapshot looking forward. This was already being worked on, uh, before the vote went, uh, for the hundred thousand dollars that failed at the time of meeting. And I, my understanding is that the committee is looking to wait until. This outreach effort is prepared and all the information can be out to the public before they, um, take another shot at any funding. Also, the existing hundred thousand dollar prop, a lot of. Which may be something taxpayers are willing to look at more favorably, if the current hundred thousand is getting itself, they might have more business to pass the next hundred thousand dollars. And the, uh, finance subcommittee is, uh, just getting working and the, uh, main assessments subcommittee is continuing to work. Key points from that, uh, there were sidewalks at the Youngerman property, which is town owned, Route three twenty north. It includes where the buses are parked and that. Three thousand feet of land gone behind it, totaling about fifty-two acres. That property was bought way back when, I don't know the exact date. By the taxpayers, new location for school. The, uh, this school building committee had determined pretty early on, looking at the top draft hole and. Weapons information that it would not be a good location. And many people, including myself, said there's no way we're going to walk away from. A piece of land that the taxpayers bought for a school and say it's not a good place for a school without being really sure of the diligence. That's not questioning the new diligence, I'm on the committee, I know we're doing it, but we made the extra effort to watch the site and move it out. And I think that that recommendation is going to stick, it's very gilly, it has wet spots. There are multiple crossings of the Frank Brook, which require weapons accommodations. It's not, uh, a good, it's not a good spot for a school, the driveway will be at minimum a thousand feet long. Just to get to the, the area of the property big enough, and then significant grading would be required. And back at the street, uh, it's right on those sharp outskirts on Route three twenty north, or we know as Ruby Road. And, uh, would probably require significant sightline correction. To Route three twenty, which the state would make us pay for, and reimbursement from the Office of School Construction. Reimbursement, uh, we will not reimburse, the taxpayers will work on realignment. So it would be, that cost would be borne under the some of the taxpayers, so for those reasons, I think the committee's gonna say that we, um. Can stand firmly on the understanding from the government, probably it's not acceptable to the person. Realignment of Route three twenty.
Know that.
No, it's, it's very gilly, prior to each one of grading. Like to get the land, to get level land to make soccer field, for example. Would require a lot of, there's, uh, two hundred, uh, greater than two hundred foot elevation difference across the property, and it's not just one slope. It goes up and down, up and down. So, those are, those are the key points in what the school building committee is up to. Questions from the board? Okay, our update, um, Christina, you wanna go over your, uh, the highlights of your report as our representative?
Sure, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, um, the, I'm just working on the agenda that is gonna go out tomorrow for the meeting that's coming up on Monday. Um, we had a, uh, we're supposed to meet on the first and third Mondays of the month, and, um, because of. Different holidays and things, uh, the schedule's a little bit off, um, we did have to cancel the last one that was supposed to be. In earlier, um, August, so it's gonna happen on Monday. At this point, we've appropriated a good percentage of the funds, there's about two hundred and ten thousand dollars left to appropriate. And there are a few items that, um, have not been decided on yet. One, and two of them are, um, we're gonna be talking about later on in this agenda. Which, um, one is for thirty-two thousand dollars and the other one's for seventeen thousand dollars, so, um. If those are approved, that would come out of the, um, the two hundred and ten that's still remaining. We're just trying to track, uh, there's a lot of things that have been purchased so far, um, we're, we haven't been able to close out very many of the projects. Uh, because there's still final bills waiting to come in, but, uh, we're getting to a point where it's. We're gonna start seeing how much is remaining in some of the projects, and I think some might need some. Additional funds, and we're gonna hear some, um, requests on those things, so that's. Pretty much where we're at, at the moment, oh, and we're still waiting for, um, s- some of the second tranche. Funding to come in, only, um. Uh, about a third of it came in, um, that we were expecting in August, so still, uh, waiting on that. But we're okay with as far as cash flow goes. Uh, any questions?
Any questions for this, sorry.
Mine is with that second tranches.
Hmm?
With that second tranches, oh, what's that, what's that amount?
Um, so, what we thought go, yeah, um. Going in is, but each, each tranche is eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents. Um, we so far got the first tranche, the first eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand. What we just got, uh, last week, I think it was, was up two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and forty-nine cents, and they say the. Remainder, which is five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars and sixty-two cents, is, uh, coming. Um, in another, another drop, um, which we expect soon, so. Um, we did, we thought it was all, the first one came as one big payment, we, I think, assumed the second one would come the same way, but. They've assured us it's coming.
Any other questions? Turning that down, I promise. Now, I'm, uh, there we go, got it. Okay, um, so moving on to process discussion, um, I don't think there's anything here, it really goes. Really the only process discussion I believe we have open is, um. This communication from ARPA to the Board of Finance, um, about ARPA thirty-two, thirty-six, which are two bonus. Requests for bonus packages, one for the, um. Uh, town employees and one for the Winston Fire Department number one, eight employees. And, uh, for anyone who's been following, you know that those have led to a little bit of concern and a lot of conversation. Because it puts the ARPA commission members in a position of voting. Potentially either for their own or for each other's bonuses. And that obviously is a difficult issue and raises some red flags, and so. Uh, Christina, I don't know if you'd like to comment on exactly how it came about that the commission. Sent it to us, maybe if you'd rather it come from you, uh, I would just like to point out one secondality. A question came up earlier about why the fire department bonuses were only for the eight people. And that is because the, um, ARPA program does not allow providing bonuses to volunteers. So, the, for ARPA, only paid people will be eligible, that's why volunteers are not included in this.
Right.
Well, volunteers do receive certain stipends and things like that, but they're not eligible in ARPA. So Christina.
Um, yeah, so, in, in our meeting, I had actually made a, um, a motion. Be- that I felt like these, these two items in particular should go to town meeting. And some of the, uh, suggestion was made that perhaps, instead of that. It would be great to get some input from some other folks, in, in particular, the Board of Finance. So, um, that's, that's where we're at, right now, um, basically, the two requests are, um. One is for the town employee bonuses and one is for the fire department bonuses, they're, they're two separate things, um, but they are related, so. I think, um. I, I see Erica and I see Alex, if, if they wanna talk specifically about those, those two. Requests, but the, the request from the ARPA Commission would be that the Board of Finance weigh in, just on the merits of the. Of the requests, um, and. That, uh, um, just the, the processes were probably beyond the process discussion at this point, so. That makes sense.
Erica or Alex, are you gonna comment before we do award comments and questions?
Sure, I'll just add in, um, I apologize for not being on camera, um, that the. Town employees, you'll notice they are, um, only staff members, they are not any elected officials. Um, similar to how the final rule excludes volunteer firefighters, it also. Um, excludes elected officials, so they are not included in there, um, so you won't see any of those, uh, members. Um, included in our proposal. And I will tell you, since, um, I've made this. Brought this to the Board of Selectment and then on to ARPA. Uh, the town of Mansfield has, um, embarked on a similar process, they, um, although. Different amounts than ours, they have included both Board of Education members in. Mansfield as well as Region nineteen, they reached out to the town of Ashford and the town of Wellington as to whether or not we'd be willing to. Fund in any portion dollars to the Region nineteen staff members. Um, I've not committed to that, I told them we had our own process already in place, so this is not, um. An atypical process, you are seeing, we are seeing other towns doing similar things, and specifically within our region. Mansfield has embarked on a, a similar process.
Did you say they're doing, uh, they're, they're doing the process for board members, or you mean for everyone on the.
Board of, so, um, teachers are considered Board of Education staff, so, um, um, within the school system, both Mansfield Public Schools and Region nineteen.
Erica, do you know how much the Region nineteen? Uh, well, how much they'd be asking for from Wellington?
So, um, well, so, the conversation between the, the three towns, my, myself. Uh, counterpart in, um, Ashford and, uh, the town manager in Mansfield. Was whatever we would contribute, um, and they were looking, they have a much larger population, both in staff and, um, Board of Ed. Um, staff members, and so they were looking at four hundred dollars, um, per individual. And so they were looking to see what we would contribute, you know, whether we broke it down. Along percentage lines like we, you know, would use for other things, we hadn't settled on any number. Um, because neither Ashford nor Wellington had committed, and without, um, taking us through the Board of Selectment first, and then ARPA. And we had put a, when this came up, we had put a hold on ARPA spending, um, so I didn't bring it back to anyone as of yet. So I, I, we, I was very clear that I could not commit to any dollar amount, but they were hoping to offset any funds that they were willing to put in.
And what, are they also doing a program for town employees, like all town employees?
Yes. It was town employees, um, Mansfield Public Schools staff, and then Region nineteen staff. Um, and I, and I believe, I apologize Stephanie, I don't have the details on their proposal, but I think, like, it excluded some administrators within both schools. There was some level of exclusion that they did, and again, no elected officials.
We don't know what an average bonus is for the town employees?
I, I believe they were looking at the same dollar amount in Mansfield across the board. So a much smaller amount than we had proposed here. Um, but they, again, when you add up all of their Board of Education in Mansfield and at Region nineteen and their staff, which is much larger than ours. And I'm not a hundred percent sure they were using their ARPA funds. Whether or not it was, um. We've been going back and forth as to whether or not it was some budgeted funds from their end, but either way, they were looking to see if we would contribute. Before they move forward with their, uh, final motions.
The dollars go between five hundred and a thousand, is that right?
Correct. Um, and then, right, or, or between, I would say, two thousand and then below, there were some as small as two fifty. Again, prorated for the amount of time during, um, that time period from beginning of COVID till the request I put in. How long a staff member had been with, um, the town.
Erica, did Mansfield have any other requirements besides length of service, did they have requirements that people that were actively engaged in COVID at the frontline? Versus those that stayed home? Do you know if there was a.
Uh, no.
Structure as such as that?
No, no, I do not believe so, Lisa, again, I don't have the exact notes from Mansfield. No, no, I do not believe so, Lisa. Again, I don't have the exact notes from Mansfield in front of me, but I don't remember that um at, at all. They included all of their sta- their staff as a whole. And they, they did have more staff than we, most of our staff was in person, uh with the exception of maybe uh a week or two. Um, the rest of our staff was in person. Mansfield's structure was different because their offices are set up a little bit different. They have more staff, so they were able to stagger a little bit differently than we did.
And um, does our town staff include the library?
It did not. I included only um town staff, so the library is, is not um considered um paid town staff. So I did not include that in my request. Just like my request did not include the fire department. They did a, a separate request.
I didn't realize the library wasn't paid town staff. Is that true, everybody?
Yes, they're, they're not technically town employee.
Then why did they submit a budget to us?
The fire department are not in town employees either, but they submit a budget to us. It's a town organization, but the organization employs the staff. Okay, so the purpose of us discussing this is less about the merit of the request, more about the process. The concerns that Christina brought up as our representation on the ARPA Commission, and I attended some of the meetings that brought up the same concerns, were that the members of the commission are in a position based on the town ordinance of having to approve fees like all the other requests, which would mean that they could potentially be voting on their own bonuses, which obviously is not a good position for them to be in, it's not a good position for the town. Um, the ordinance vests the power, but that doesn't mean that it's a good idea to do it. So we, more than, uh, more than half of the people on the commission would be receiving the one or the other of these two bonuses. And even if everyone refused themselves, the last couple of people remaining in the room could approve it based on Robert's rules. However, you'd be in a position where it would still potentially not look that good, and particularly with the possibility, and we don't know how they would vote, I'm not making commitment for them, but for example, there's a member of the commission who would be eligible for the fire department bonus. They would not necessarily have to refuse themselves from the discussion of the bonus of a town employees, because it does not give them money. But then you could potentially have a situation where they could vote on the one that affects the town employees, then leave the room for the next vote on the fire department bonuses, and then all those townspeople who just got the yes vote from this fire department member would then come in and potentially vote yes for that fire department member. So it would look in some people's eyes like one proportion, right, one portion of the commission voted yes, the other portion of the commission took her. So, and I'm not accusing anyone of anything untoward. It's the caution about what it could look like. Um, so that's, that's why it's coming to us. We have no authority right here in the Board of Finance. However, we do have a traditional way to do business, which is we make a lot of these decisions or we ask the selectmen to send these decisions to the taxpayers. Again, you do not have the authority in this case, but we can make a recommendation from this board on what we think is a good process or a um, you know, the most ethical process. And I think that's really, that's really our only option here is to say we recommend, or we suggest you do this, or do that, or we take no action and just say it's not something that is of vested power for us and we take no action. Lisa.
I have one more question, and I think um Erica may have spoke to this or Alex, but I, I just I'm not clear and I apologize. Um. With the seventeen thousand dollars for the fire department that are full-time or part-time or paid employees, can you identify how many people that is? Five?
It's off the top of my head, it's over ten. Nobody was getting more than a fifteen, than fifteen hundred dollars. It was less than the um the regular employees was the same as the town employees, and then the supervisors got fifteen hundred unlike the two thousand that the town was doing. We just did it a little different.
So you have ten?
Oh, well, no, it's, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head how many employees it actually is. It's four full-time employees, the rest are part-time pretty.
And the part-time's prorated? So the full-timers get more than the part-timers?
No.
What?
No, but they also, no, but they're, they also worked a lot during COVID. And this is what this was for.
So it's a collective, it was a collective time?
Correct, correct. Yeah, there, there are two new employees that did get prorated down. I think they're both only getting two hundred dollars because they started in the middle of COVID.
There were somewhere around fourteen or sixteen employees in the request, which is on the, which is on our website available.
Yeah, yeah, I just couldn't remember off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
So we, uh, as I said, we cannot approve this here. I think from a Board of Finance point of view, I don't see a lot of concern about the bonuses themselves as much as how do we get the town and these employees out of the jackpot where it could be seen like they're approving each other's bonuses and it's all sort of an inside job. Again, that's not an accusation. That's just, I don't, it would be easy for someone in the public to infer that.
I think that one of the issues is that it's the structure of the ARPA committee, commission, the way it was set up. It was set up to favor um membership by uh town supervisors, department heads in the town, quite a lot of them. So, so now that, and I don't think anyone will presume that there are going to be pay bonuses to those people and their staffs. So I think, I think that's, if we had sort of a more, you know, like say half of, half of the commission were made up of citizens without a dog in the fight in that way, then it would have been a much, a much easier way to vote up at, at, at commission level. I think that that's what, it just me up a low is, is just the, the feel of that. Um, and financially, that's sort of the dish, we just share um concern about people voting for their own gain, even if they're all good people and they all deserve it, you know, I mean, which, which I would say is a premise, of course.
Let's take a discussion and make a motion. I move that the Board of Finance sent to the ARPA Commission a non-binding recommendation to have ARPA thirty two and thirty six sent to the taxpayers. I think I would say by, by town meeting, better. I'll, I'll amend to that right, to a town meeting for a little bit.
My second.
So, so from Mike, well, I totally appreciate that and personally, I agree. Um. I think what the ARPA Commission is really looking for from, from the Board of Finance is a um a yes or no that, that the bonuses are a good idea. So, um.
Okay, no. Yeah. It, it puts us in a position of giving a um tacit approval, something we don't have authority to approve. Okay, Erica, I, again, I, I don't have a problem with the bonuses. And by, by, by the vote of the people in this town, they've created an ordinance that says this is where the power is vested in the ARPA Commission, which means it's not vested in the Board of Finance, right? So um, or, or, and it's not vested in going to town meeting. So I, I don't see, I don't see an issue with the bonuses, and I think the ARPA Commission has done a good job of discussing merits of these requests. They're doing their job. I just, I think I don't know. The, the thing I feel strongly about is we should not have the ARPA commissioners at risk and the town at risk by them approving their own bonuses. That's my, Lisa.
Um. I think, I think what I would like to say is that um I heard your concern, Mike, as my chair of the Board of Finance and our chair of the Board of Finance in Wellington. And I heard Christina's concern as the chair of the ARPA Commission with a great deal of past experience in town, positions and politics. And so that was my primary concern until I went to one of the ARPA meetings and one of the ARPA members that sat at the table said well, I don't want to bring it to the town because they'll say no. And that's, that's taped. And so that's why I want to say that I strongly support you saying you need to bring it forward to the town. Um, and I too am not opposed to those who worked during COVID get bonuses to retain employment or to reward being at the front lines. It, it's just that, and in a small town, it's difficult. I can appreciate what's happening here, but I think it's exclusive to some degree, and I don't really think it was well thought out. I, I really think that there should have been some more research done by the senior leadership in the town to find out what our surrounding communi- communities did because um we're part of a region loosey-goosey, but I just, I agree with you. I just want to say all that. And, and I want to reiterate that one of the members on the ARPA Committee recorded, said he didn't want to bring it forward because he didn't want the town, the tech, because the town voters wouldn't support it. That in and of itself is misuse of funds.
Other, what, another discussion on the motion? I, I, I I think we're spreading on some, on, on tricky people around here from what the uh town voted on start the ARPA Commission on whether we should even be giving advice at all to the ARPA Commission. I, I'm, I'm, I, I, and it's strong agreement with me, Mike, on the view that it does not look good and that it probably should go to town meeting. And, and that would be my choice as a member of the community, but I'm not sure as a member of the Board of Finance, we should be telling the ARPA Commission anything. Uh, and, and I think these are different. If, if, I think that my, my view as a, as a citizen would be that the, the Board of, uh, going to town meeting would probably be the best thing, but I'm not even sure that the ARPA Commission has the ability to go to town meeting to make decisions. I, I don't know, I, I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me to read the fine print on where decisions need to be made. Because if you're picking and choosing or goes to town meeting, right, 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 right. I, I don't know, it, maybe you can do that though, with the orders I have in the bill. So I guess, so some points, and I guess my feeling would be as far as whether we have any, whether we should comment at all. The ARPA Commission was set up with a rep from the Board of Finance, specifically to get Board of Finance to vote. And that rep happens to also be the ARPA chairman, uh, commission chairman, but that was just by their process. So I think this is helping, in my mind, this is helping our rep represent the Board of Finance in that commission set.
Can I say something again?
By the way, Lisa.
I, and I just, off of what Peter just said, I agree with Pete a lot. Um, but Pete, it should go on further to say that the chair of the ARPA Commission had her concerns. She was, she was nominated to that position. So it was a democratic process, and she is voicing her concerns, and so did our chairman of the Board of Finance. And to say that it shouldn't go to town meeting, who are you supposed to listen to then, you know?
Right, right. I'm not, I'm not saying it shouldn't go to town meeting.
I know, I hear you. I'm just.
I'm just, I'm just trying to follow the ordinance. It's
Right.
Following the ordinance, I'm good. In fact.
I get it, I get it.
Just town meeting if, if it, if it, if it's legal under the ordinance. Christina.
Um, we, we did have the town attorney at the last meeting and he did my interpretation of what he said is that it is possible for us to go to town meeting, um, but it is also possible for us to not go to town meeting. Um. He also reiterated that it definitely, the, the decision lies with um the ARPA Commission, but I think if we were to um what's the word? Um. Give it, give it to the town meeting to decide. I think that um his view was that it was okay. But.
So he was basically pointing out, how do we accommodate everybody to, to come to a win-win? Whereas if you don't bring it to town meeting and you don't have to, is he saying legally, right, by the ordinance, like what Peter is talking about? You run the risk of turning the entire town against the, the the people that make the, I mean, that's I think that that's what we're saying. The Board of Finance, I hear from Mike and from you Christina, were saying that it should go to town vote. And what's the fear? What, what is the fear exactly?
Well, I would say two things. One is the ordinance set it up the way they, the way it was set up partially because this is federal money, which is outside the normal town meeting process, you know, which is to vote on the way local money is spent. Um, so that's one thing. Um, the other thing, just bothers me about the whole thing, and that is um that because we have a quirky sort of situation, being such a small town and the historic uh underpinning of our um you know, of our town associations, you know, it leaves out one fire department that's all volunteer, leaves out the librarians. By the way, I know personally, did curb service and, you know, ran out to people's cars for books during COVID. Uh, you know, to me, that's a pretty big public service. Um, uh, so, so that, it, it, you know, there's an unevenness, but you would, I think do, you know, there's that whole thing about, don't let the, you know, the, the perfect be the enemy of the good. Um, you, you know, I, I think there's, there's, there's good in there's something very good about the bonus, like, you know, it's just there's trouble spots. But I do kind of agree that, I don't, you know, I think the way this process is set up, I, I don't agree that the Board of Finance should sort of do a should use its power to stipulate the course of action.
Chief, why don't you go ahead?
I just, what, um, you had brought up about the volunteers. We are trying to work on something for the volunteers. It just won't go through ARPA. So we're, I don't want anybody to think that we're leaving the volunteers out. We are trying to work for something um to bring to you guys at a later time. We just couldn't have it together yet.
But in that case, that would come to the taxpayers.
Absolutely. That would come to you guys. Yes, that would come to you guys first and then, yep.
Wait, what was, what was your motion?
To make a non-binding recommendation to the commission that they send it to.
You, you, you accept a friendly amendment to say a non-binding resolution to the representatives to our commission? Because that way we can, we, we can recommend to our representative instead of to the commission. Because I, I don't think that, I think what your ordinance sounded to me is we have no input on the commission, but we do for our representative. That's the, and, and I don't think that's.
I think it's splitting hairs.
I think it's splitting hairs. I'm just trying to stay on legal, you know?
As legal as I can, trying to use our legal expertise, so here's.
Yeah, I'm trying to stand it, Jeff. I mean, uh, Yeah, I'm trying to stand it, Jeff. I mean, uh, I got enough legal issues. So your friendly amendment would add the language through our representative. Right. So the Board of Finance makes a non-binding recommendation through our representative to the ARPA Commission to send ARPA thirty-two and thirty-six to a town meeting. Yes?
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion on the motion? Just for recommendation. Right, of course not, of course not. We, right. Okay, I'm gonna do a specific roll call vote for this one here. Stephanie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Lisa?
Is that a yes?
Oh, you're muted.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And Christina?
I'll abstain.
Okay, and I'm a yes. All right, so let the record show the motion passed with one extension by Christina. Okay. Let's see. Anything else on our vote? No? Okay. Move on to review previous budget seasons. The only item I have here is request form. Last year we sent on a long and experimental form. Only one department used the form. Um, I'd like to discuss. Uh, I'd like people to be thinking for our next meeting about maybe revision of the form that takes into account the things we stumbled on in this year's budget process, like.
Send us a copy of that form.
Did last year, but I'll send it to you again.
Thank you very much because I have a hard time keeping track of something.
I just, so. I just, so the, um, for requirements I would be reading. The desire of the board last year was to get things that were significant changes specifically noted. So that uh it would, it would speed up our discussion and our understanding of those unique things like, um, you know, we had a lot of discussion about certain departments, whether they're adding staff or changing hours. Or some people part-time becoming full-time, things like that. So I'll email it out to you, board members, and then maybe at the next meeting we can discuss if there's a better way to ask those questions. Because the form wasn't used much. Maybe we didn't do a good job of thinking and presenting.
Well, it was just first year and.
Yeah, it was a test.
True, it was another, you know, step.
So that's all I have for that. Uh, any comments, questions before we move on?
I, I had another idea and that is um I think it, I think you could benefit from a tool that provides context for the budget asks and then, you know, in twenty uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four because uh for instance, a budget's maybe past year or two, uh, two-year look back, sort of what they, what was approved for them the year before and the year before that maybe, coming in with their, with their proposal. That would be something I think should be, you know, more officially done through finance.
It does happen on many of the budgets, but not consistently on all of them. The form that Donna sends out typically has the previous two years on it. And it sometimes comes back to us with a third year filled in directly. Sometimes it comes in as a unique spreadsheet just for the.
Right.
So you should, you should try to steer people to the multi-year form.
Right. Um, uh, because it, it feels like some of it's out of context and I certainly, I think, I think it's also beneficial to know who's like, you know, come in that's sort of off savings ideas and things like that. And then they come in and they really have a program they need. It's worthwhile to know what that, what that department's history is.
Anything else on this? Seeing none, annual reports. It's the time of year to um start asking departments to provide annual report. We have not done that successfully the last two years because of COVID and change of secretaries and various other reasons. So my plan, and I just want to make sure board members are on board with this, is I'm gonna send a letter to all budget spending departments indicating that we need this, we need three years, but encouraging them to simplify the request. Some of the, some of the annual reports are very long and the law requires only a certain minimal amount of information. And just encouraging people to submit, basically send us three simple things each of the years uh to meet with the legal requirements so we can get annual reports compiled. They are required to exist and be a matter of course.
Do you know what the complication number is?
I don't.
Is it the other month?
I think the main thing was just, just the format so that visually, where the piles like easily.
That was a big problem in the past. Sometimes you get PDFs, sometimes you get Word, sometimes you get pictures, cut and paste it in. It required a lot of manipulation to get it to a format. Yep. All right, so seeing no complaints or discourse about that? Christina, were you gonna say something?
Hmm.
Okay. Um, then let's move on to new business. Item one, DW request to CIP funds to the stormwater management mapping services. Let's see if I can move back the screen share here. This um came in, this request came in pretty late, uh, but it is something that's already approved in CIP. They're just looking uh to move that process along like we typically do.
That's the one related to me?
Yes. Kept putting it off hoping it would go away. Because that was on, that was.
Stated.
It was CIP when I was on CIP, which means it's been around a while. So, oh, it was on CIP when Christina was still.
Christina, was that like a two thousand nineteen deadline or something like that to?
I think, yeah, um, I think the original deadline was a while ago. I don't remember. But um, we were, we knew it would, that there would be a cost associated with it. And that it was quite a bit of work.
They were looking to be reevaluated. It's not the same. Not as an urban area. I'm going to read um Kelsey's email. Passes the quote for the data stormwater management system mapping services for the town. Funding is from two previous years in CIP, which is the fiscal nineteen and fiscal twenty. And is LOSEF funding that has been put aside over the two fiscal years, twenty thousand dollars in each year. The software will be used to help the town with inventory and map of the stormwater infrastructure such as. Pipes, outfalls, yada, 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 in a format that complies with the requirements before by the MS four current. This is the same company that will be doing the road management software and they are on the broad bidding list. The town was designated as a city a few years ago and the town has to complete the MS four current. No, you have to because they're designated as a city.
Apparently they start taking state funding.
They got, they got, they got cranky and started taking. We asked the same question at the time.
I think it's largely the urban definition is more because of our proximity, right?
It's the apartment complexes.
Better than.
Yeah, that's what it is.
They only be a very small part of your town. It'd be highly densely populated. All right, can you just share? We have a, uh, we have a suggested motion. I need, I need to have the number on the, from the quote in front of me.
So Mike, can I ask you, and I apologize again, I think you are all aware, um, not in the office um right now. Did Donna send you a suggested motion?
She did not send a suggested motion.
Okay.
I was going to the quote, so I need to.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, you know, I, I hesitate for us to go off the cuff here. Um, and I don't have that in front of me. Well, um, I encourage you to take up the conversation. I think it's best that we make sure the motion is um properly worded and, and the accounts coming from the right area because the question, the motion you make is the question that goes directly to town meeting. And um, so, you know, while I'd like to continue to move this forward, I want to make sure we do it right. So um, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the process, but without um the suggested motions and, and this is low sub funds that, that we are using. Um, I would suggest that we probably wait on an actual motion. I would ask that you wait on an actual motion.
Yeah, I'm going to further support that idea about the fact that the total fee is forty-five thousand dollars. Was it present or was it forty thousand dollars?
So that I can, I can speak to that a little bit, Mike. So um, some of, we've been, while, while Peter's saying we were hoping it would go away, that's, that's not exactly true. We know it's not going away. Um, we have to be making progress and, and which we have. We've actually um had multiple meetings with the state regarding this. Um, and, and we are still um in good standing with, with the, the permit. So um, it was making sure that we had um the right process for this mapping and that it aligned with everything that, that we needed. And so we've managed to get that all together and, and that's why we're here with the request now. The request has come in more than what we have. Um, and Troy um believes he can find that the additional five thousand dollars within his budget um to support this. And that's why we've, we're only asking you for forty thousand. So that's the two twenty thousand dollar um C, LOSEF funds that were set aside. If we ask for an additional five thousand from LOSEF, as you know, it might uh throw off um the entire process of, of our CIP plan. And so we're only asking for forty thousand, even though the quote is for forty-five, we'll be making up the additional forty-five thousand dollars, uh, the additional five thousand dollars outside of the LOSEF funds.
Okay, thank you for all that. Um. Based on all, then next time, second. Oh, fifth. Oh, that's your job. Oh, wow. You're getting close to the German. Yeah. Um, and you discussed, well, no, it's motion table.
Well, can I, can I ask about it?
Yeah.
Um, is there a timeframe? I looked at the proposal, but I couldn't tell like when they were proposing to do it and how long it would take them because it, I know it mentioned, I think, nine hundred and fifty different catch basins and things that they would be actually looking at and evaluating. Um, is that like a group of people going around and doing that or is it one person that's just gonna be doing it for months? Like, what is, how does it work? Um, yeah, Troy, I think Troy may be able to touch on that.
Okay, so it's gonna be a couple of month process. Um, there will be a group of them that will go out um and check everything to measure, you know, pipe size, catch basins, GPS location of all the outfalls, everything like that. So it will be a couple of months before it actually gets um all presented to us and on our GSI, you know, layers for all that. So it will be a couple of month process.
And then going forward is the idea that the town, that, that the town crew would be updating that, that data? And that it, basically the, the task going forward is just keep it updated? Or is there a point in time where like another one of these big analyses has to be done?
Uh, no, I mean, we could update it. I mean, if there was a huge road project, I mean, nothing's being, if we put a basin in on one road or something like that, we added one. We could add that into our GIS um software ourselves. But this is basically, i- it's not gonna be an updated thing unless the town has some huge development come in where they add more roads, more basins, something like that.
Mm-hmm, okay. And Christina, I would say the only other thing that might change that is if the requirements um for the MS four changed and required us to do something that would um have a larger undertaking, otherwise we could make those um smaller adjustments. Yeah, okay, good.
Um, Troy, while you're on, I think I've asked this question before. I think I remember the answer to it, but um we spend uh in, in labor hours, uh, we spend, I don't know, hundreds and hundreds of hours over a period of a few years, a few years ago, doing the gas fee thing, which was supposed to provide some of the information that is needed here. And I think if I remember right, you checked and found that that information is either not available or gone or not relevant. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
That is, that is, uh, I don't think this is anything on you or your fault. It was before your time, but that is a, that is a huge disappointment in my mind. The taxpayers paid town employees to gather that information for years uh over the course of years. And it's irrelevant or lost or whatever. It's, it's really unfortunate. Um, but I'm not making that comment against you or your current employees at all.
Mike, we do, and that's totally, that's my, that's uh, um, we do have a, I have a list of all, every road with every basin on it. I just don't have a GPS location to put it on a GIS system. Um, this.
Well, at least you have the list to point this survey towards.
And then with this survey, they're gonna do, they're gonna check each base and, and give it a poor, fair, good, excellent. They're gonna check pipe, di- um, pipe diameter, where it goes, all the outfalls will be marked. So it will be pulled up. Anybody will, in town can look at this software for what it is. So if a developer wanted to do something or contractor or whatever, they would know what size pipes are in the road, how many catch basins are on the road, um, what the conditions of the basins are. And then it also gives us something that we know looking forward that certain basins need to be replaced in town um long-term.
Right, okay, thank you. So at least there's a list that's not totally worthless for me. You gotta, that's something. All right, um, we should vote on the motion to table. Aye.
Aye.
Lisa? Hi, Christina?
Hi.
And I am aye. Motion passes unanimously to the table. New business, request for CIP funds to the stormwater management. That concludes our new business. Um, we're onto the welfare. I uh, I think we all know, and maybe some others want to comment on the recent loss of a very popular, well-known local figure uh as well as Eric's father-in-law, Bob Wachinsky. And um, there would, there would not be a way for me to adequately uh explain what a loss it is for our community. Obviously, my condolences to his entire family. I would also point out that um services are tomorrow evening and Saturday. Would be great to see anyone, you know, who is willing or interested to show support of the community to someone who contributed an awful lot to this community.
Calling our research department and services this Saturday. Five to seven, right here.
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Have to do one or two. Said that quite well, but I, I had the pleasure of serving with Bob on this board. They, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed his presence pretty. I always, I liked him. He was a very colorful gentleman. I, I, I just thoroughly enjoyed uh talking to him, you know, seeing him around town. And I enjoyed our time. We're waiting for him for. Erica, just let your family know that I promise we will rumble about the fire riders again this year.
I just remembered I was speaking at ARPA recently about the second ambulance and calling, calling people in the room that don't, don't know the history. Of course, you know a lot of history. Call them puppies.
Hey, Mike?
Hi, Lisa.
I also had the pleasure of serving with Bob on the board and um he, he has a very, he had a huge heart. He had a huge heart. So I enjoyed it very much.
Anything else on Bob Wachinsky? Um, I also, uh, hang on, hang on. Uh, I also have a um, I just want to make a quick note. Uh, one of our regular members, Joe Shrell, is ill right now, so we'll wish him well. And uh, we, for some reason, we don't have a present to speak on the agenda a second time, but traditionally we have been doing a second present to speak. So I will offer it if anyone out there wants to. I don't want to come up with anyone's opportunity. It looks like it's pretty much us and Ralph, so. All right, uh, then move to your second. Um, everyone, uh, say aye.
Aye, aye.
And look, unanimous, good night, everybody, thank you.